Good evening and welcome everyone to this special council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have regrets tonight from Counselor Seven. And joining me in the council chamber is City Clerk, Ms. Defoe. And I will turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of the county interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adjournment to a public meeting under the Planning Act. And there is a motion that the special council meeting adjourned for a public meeting under the Planning Act to hear from members of the public with respect to the following planning matters. The first one being official plan amendment application, OPA zero zero one dash twenty-two and zone change application Z zero seven dash twenty-two. And then the second matter will be zone change application Z zero eight dash twenty-two and to reconvene following the public meeting.
As your mover to adjourn into public, thank you, Counselor Burbak, and second by Counselor Henderson. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. So I'd like to call the public meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to give counsel and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application Z zero eight dash two-two. The application affects the existing R four zoning provision. I am sorry, I think I'm on the wrong one. I am on the wrong one. I apologize. I just noticed that. So I'm going to call this public meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to give counsel and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the following application, official plan amendment, OPA zero zero one dash two-two and zones change application Z zero seven dash two-two. The application affects the property with the municipal address of three nine eight zero, road one 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 in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting will be as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or agent will then make a presentation. Counsel may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comment nor to take a position on this application at this public meeting. And I'm going to repeat that item C. Counsel may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments nor to take a position on this application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations and comments and questions. Delegates are reminded that their questions and comments should be related to planning. Comments, questions and comments from the Q and A will be read in by the clerk's office staff member. The public is advised that a person, if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a Bala is adopted or a decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss and appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to the order of this procedure? Seeing none, we will now proceed with the meeting. And we will hear from the staff with respect to the application. And I'm going to invite Mr. Bannon Planner to make the presentation on behalf of the staff. Mr. Bannon?
Thank you. The subject lands of the application for the official planned amendment zero one twenty-two and zone change application Z seven zero seven twenty-two are located on the west side of road one eleven between line thirty-four and the city boundary. The proposed plan of subdivision contains seventy street, street townhouse dwelling lots and one storm water management block. The plan of subdivision is proposed to be served by four new local streets with two access points on to road one eleven. And the lot frontages that are being proposed are for street townhouses. And they range from approximately six meters to eleven point five meters. Surrounding land to the north is commercial, to the east are single detached dwellings and industrial facility. To the south is the CN Railway. And to the west is a hydro corridor in the future subdivision. The applications were accepted on July twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. And there are several reports submitted in support of the applications being the planning justification report, a geotechnical investigation, a functional servicing report, noise and vibration study, a transportation impact study, environmental site assessment and archaeological potential evaluation. The subject lands were annexed into the city boundary in two thousand and sixteen and they're located between the boundary of the East Secondary Plan and the city limit. The area hasn't been designated in the city's official plan. And as a result, it still retains the urban fringe designation from the County of Perth official plan. Dowkin is proposing to apply the same medium density residential designation provisions that are found in the adjacent East Secondary Plan, which is to the west. And they would allow for a minimum density of twenty-five units per hectare, a maximum density of a hundred units per hectare, a maximum height of six stories and a minimum of forty percent of new housing units being in forms other than singly attached dwellings. Then tend to the proposed zone change application is to rezone the subject lands from an urban reserve. You are dash four zone to a residential fourth density R four bracket one zone. That zone permits street townhouse dwellings with a minimum lot area of a hundred and eighty square meters and a minimum lot frontage of six meters. Application has been circulated for comments. Several agencies have provided comments back and of note are the township of Perth East. They're asking the owner builds an abutting portion of road one eleven to the municipal standard, including sidewalks and lighting as required. They're also asking that no driveways for the plan of subdivision approach onto the road one eleven that they submit a traffic impact study, which has been submitted and circulated. And that the city of Stratford works with the county to petition the MTO to implement better traffic control measures at the intersection of one eleven and line thirty-four. So also other output or other comments that have been submitted and they're included in the report. Notice was sent out to twenty-three surrounding property owners in September. And notice was also published in the Beacon Herald on November twelfth of two thousand and twenty-two. Three responses have been received from residences. One response was in full support of the application and the other responses raised concerns relating to the potential for increases in traffic and the need for improvements at the highway seven and eight and County Road thirty-three intersections. Concern over the potential for increased noise and concerned with access points to the subdivision and headlight glare coming from subdivision traffic and concerned with who would be policing the subdivision and how it would get serviced. Available to answer any questions from council or the public.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Are there any questions from council at this time? Counsel Burbak?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Banerman. I'm curious if the intersection of one eleven and highway seven and eight was included in the traffic study. It doesn't seem to be, but I was just wanted to confirm that.
Mr. Bannon?
Yes, through your worship, they did look at the traffic impacts on the roadway and the intersections of that subdivision. When I looked at the traffic impact study, it does not look like it looked at the intersections on the highway or on the the road to the south. But I have not received comments back from the engineering department yet. And they will be doing it, completing the full review of that transportation impact study. And we will discuss their comments with the applicant.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Counselor Henderson?
I couldn't really see very well on the, on the diagram or the one that we had. Where the roads are all going to come out? I saw there was a concern from somebody that they were worried where the road was going to come out.
Mr. Bannon?
Through your worship, I think she cut out, at least on my audio at the end, Counselor Henderson did. I have shown sketch to the resident that expressed that concern and detailed where those intersection of those roads would be in relation to the properties to the east. I haven't heard back from them yet to find out if they have any further concerns. But we will be reaching out to them again before we finalize a report that will be brought forward to the Planning Heritage Committee.
Sorry if I cut out. I just noticed my mute button must have got hit again. I was wondering where the four roads were actually going to come out. I couldn't see them on the plan. Or if possible, can we get a larger version of it so we can actually see? Like is one coming out on Dural Street and one on Ontario Street and two on road one eleven? Is that my, am I understanding that correctly or?
Through your worship. So there's two roads that will be coming out onto road one eleven. So those are how the subdivisions can be accessed from the east. There is potentially a future connection to that will go through the hydro corridor that will connect to the cachet development to the west. So that's north of the CN Railway line. So that that would be the connections. The, when we talk about the city streets, those would be the internal streets to the subdivision, not for access points.
Anything further? Counsel Briscoe and then Counsel Burbak?
Thank you. After your worship, I noticed in the report CN Rail had noise concerns. If you could elaborate on any, if the city shares those concerns as well as assuming it's townhouses, if there, if noise, if it's close enough to have noise concerns, could there also be safety concerns with townhouses? We usually see families, apologies for my son. If there's any safety concerns and if there's anything that can be implemented to perhaps put up a sort of barriers or anything to prevent access to the tracks.
Mr. Bannon?
Through your worship. Yes, the city will be reviewing that noise study and noise and vibration study. Once we have some of those comments back from engineering services, they will be included in that future report that comes back to Planning Heritage Committee. Typically, you would see those concerns being dealt with through conditions in the plan of subdivision and through the subdivision agreement. They might be a combination of having noise acoustic barriers along with burming along the railway to make sure that those dwellings that are abutting that section are safe for the residents that would be there in the future. At this point in time, we're still in discussions with the applicant about the configuration of the subdivision. So there may be further changes that result once we've entered into some of those further discussions after this public meeting and after we've heard from the public.
Thank you. Counsel Burbak?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm just curious about the hydro corridor. Is it directly to the west of the drawing that we see? It, I can see the railway on the drawing, but I don't see the hydro corridor. So, and I do remember there is another sub, proposed subdivision beyond that. But I'm curious if the rail or the hydro corridor is, is right up against those townhouses.
Mr. Bannon?
Through your worship, yes, you are correct that that hydro corridor is immediately to the west. So it's on the left hand side of that plan that has been submitted with the report. And it does separate the subject lands from the cachet development lands that are to be developed to the west.
Anything further? Counsel Briscoe?
Thank you. After your worship, just for helping public with clarity of terms. Could you just provide a description of what a street townhouse is? I know that there's stacked and others, but I've had a few questions on just what street specific townhouse means.
Mr. Bannon?
Through your worship, it is defined in your zoning bylaw and I don't have the exact definition in front of me. But typically, a street townhouse will be placed on a block of land with several units that are attached together. So typically, it's four units or more of dwellings that are attached together. And what happens is that once dwelling has been created, the developer potentially would go through part lot control and divide all of those townhouse dwelling units up into individual lots. Each of those dwelling units are separated by a common wall on the interior of the dwelling.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bannon. At this time, I'm going to move forward and ask the representative for the applicant to please make their presentation.
Through your worship, we're just working to connect the applicants into the meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm Poonya Sagar. I am the planner of this project from the provenance side. I have made a presentation. It's a quick presentation. Thanks to city planner who has explained almost everything. I didn't have to add anything more on to that. But since I have already presented, I mean, prepared the presentation, I'd like to go quickly over it. And first, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the council for, for the new term. And we're very happy to work with this council in the days to come. Next slide, please. So yeah, as I mentioned, the development is proposed by Paradise Properties Development Limited. I have Thomas Abraham as representative of the developer in the meeting. I, I hope he is there. And I'm Poonya Sagar. As I mentioned, I'm representing MD and PS. That's Municipal Development and Planning Services, Inc. That's our company, planning company. And I have Jamie Dick from MT Consultants Stratford, who was the engineering consultant. Next, please. As I was listening to the presentation and I, I heard that question. And I think this picture is more clear in terms of like where the site is actually located. It's north of CN Rail and east of Hydro Corridor along Street one one one. And further south from that intersection, which we talked about, the line thirty-four and road one one one, that's, that's where the site is. Next, please. So this picture, I'd like to spend a little bit more time on this picture because it's, this is, this is what we are proposing. And as the question was on, like, how many, how many streets are coming on to the one one one? Like, there was a confusion, like four streets. No, they're, they're, they're not, not four streets. Rather, they are just two streets. One closer to that line thirty-four. And the next one is closer to the CN Rail. And we are, we are thinking and we assume that as for the city's transportation master plan, Duro Street is coming to intersect on one 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 and we somehow tried to align that. So that like when city pursues that extension, that'll go through our subdivision and there's, there's a provision. So the bottom, bottom street, which you can see in the graphic, is potential extension of Duro Street. And two, those two cul-de-sacs are just internal for, for the services for the block townhouses. And if you could see the arrow on the top north left, left side of this sketch, there's an arrow. That's where we are proposing to connect the services because that would be one of the, one of the questions, I guess, from the engineering, like how we're going to serve the, the subdivision. So we are proposing this and we are yet to discuss this with Hydro One for the easement. But as I know that city has already circulated our proposal to Hydro One and we are going to meet and discuss with that with Hydro One as well. Next slide, please. So, I mean, it's, it's quick overview, the policy, provincial policy suggests for like medium density housing options and we are proposing meeting density housing options in Stratford. So, and, and obviously like we are trying our level best to make it affordable to, to the, to the people. And cities official plan also suggests that it's, it's within the urban expansion, but it has not yet been designated for residential development. So our proposal is to change the official plan and accommodate it as, accommodate this land as part of the residency development. So that's, that's our intent. Next slide, please. Here, I, this, this would be the repetition again, so I'm not going to spend too much of time on it. But like, yeah, yeah, this land was amalgamated back in two thousand and sixteen from Perth East and it's still designated as urban reserve. So we wanted to redesignate it for, we want to, we wanted to designate it for residential. So next, please. This list was already spelt out in, in Mr. Bannon's presentation as well. So these are the studies we have completed. And this is, these studies we completed following the pre-application meeting with the city, which we did back in July two thousand and twenty-one. And there were less of studies required and we, we have already completed that studies and submitted the reports to, to the city for, for the review. Next, please. So, and we were, we're very sensitive on following the urban design and landscape guidelines which City of Stratford has. That is in effect since two thousand and fourteen. So Stormwater Pond, we have that at the southernmost proportion of the subdivision. That was strategically done to, to add us two concerns. One is like definitely the, the topography of the site because it's sloped towards that direction, number one. Number two, we wanted to have a kind of buffer between the residence and the CN Rail. And that was a question earlier. So safety was one of the concerns for, for ours, from our side. So it's not only about the flooding, but like distance between, between CN Rail and the residence was, was important. So we addressed that according to the design. And, and the rainfall is also like two, we, we took two fifty year, two fifty years rainfall standards so that like there would be enough space to, to hold the rainwater there. The subdivision is walkable. It's tree line and we are proposing well-lit streets with sidewalks all around. And obviously like we're environmentally, environmentally sensitive development we're proposing. Street townhouses, as we talked about, in, as, as it was, there was a question about street townhouse and definition for it. We followed the definition of street townhouse of City of Stratford zoning bylaw and, and proposed, proposed the townhouses along Street one one one, not, I mean, facing to the street, but the driveways are from the back. So they're like, it's, it's not only the safety, but it's a, it's a good looking feature as well for the city. So we, they are rear-facing garages along road one 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 to minimize disruption of traffic and risk of accidents. So when it comes to, when it comes to vegetation, like we, we, we are proposing low maintenance pest resistant shrubs and trees, parking, minimum two parking spaces per unit and two-story townhouses with visually appealing design features. One of the things I, I'd like to highlight here is like, we are trying to achieve at least like three to four bedroom townhouses in that area so that that also contributes in affordability because of the housing prices in the market in these days. Next, please. So these are some of the glimpses of proposed townhouses. We're not committing and I hope council would not be asking the same design at the end. But like, this is, this is something we have envisioned. So the top picture is block, block town, view of the block townhouse, which you, you'd be looking from the cul-de-sac. The lower one is kind of perspective view of the block townhouse and the street townhouse. That street townhouse is the, the street parallel to one, road one 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 is seen, which is going into the subdivision and along the, and perpendicular to that is the block townhouse, which is, which is proposed extension of that Doro Street. Hopefully, one day we will achieve that collaboratively. Next, please. Here, this, I don't know if it's blurry, please forgive us. But like this is, this is how we, we are proposing the street townhouses along Street one one one. So on the top side, you, you won't see any garages over there. But the bottom is the other side of other elevation of the, of that street, of those three townhouses where garages are from the back. And the front is street, front of these townhouses are facing to Street one one one. Next, please. So as we, as we anticipate, our road ahead is to work closely with the agency's community and the city council. And we are so happy and privileged to get public and agency comments. We would work with that. Consultant studies and reports will guide us in ensuring safety and quality. And our goal is to be shovel-ready by summer two thousand and twenty-three if everything goes all right. Next, please. So what are the benefits of the community, benefits for the community? One is there would be new options for prospective homeowners in, in City of Stratford. Other one is the economic activity, jobs, investment and tax revenue. And obviously, that part of the city is recently annexed, so there's not enough infrastructure. We're, we're there to install the new infrastructure and municipal services so that that'll be benefit to the community. On that note, I think I have completed. Next slide, please. Yeah. So thank you for your attendance. Please don't hesitate to share any questions, comments or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. Questions? I see Counsel Henderson. Go ahead.
Through your worship, I have several. First of all, I see the townhouses, which are great and they're badly needed, especially with more bedrooms. And I'm wondering if any of them will be accessible so that they won't have steps, they have the wider doorways, they have, they're able to pull up, you know, to the stove and sink, et cetera. Do you want me to ask them all or do you want to answer as I go?
Why don't we allow Mr. Sager to answer that and we'll both, thank you, Counsel Henderson.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Henderson. Yeah, we have, we have thought about it and wherever possible, like fourth bedroom would be on the main, main floor so that like we can accommodate that accessibility issue.
So my next one is you say it would be environmentally sensitive. Does that mean you're going to be building like net zero homes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question again, but I would not be able to commit on anything for that matter, but definitely our direction is, our orientation and direction is to, to that, to that goal.
And my next one is you say it's walkable, but, and there's going to be sidewalks, I see, along one, one eleven. But I'm wondering how people would get into the city? Or are you just waiting for future connections? If they're walking or riding their bike, you know?
Through, through you, Mr. Cherry. Yeah, that's correct. So we are, we are hoping to, to get connected with that subdivision, which is coming up at the, on the west side of the property and to, to Hydro Corridor.
And my last one is you say that they're going to be affordable. Do you have a price range approximately what they're going to be starting at?
Through, through Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. But yeah, I, I think it is, it is premature at this time to, to, to think about it. But yeah, I mean, we, we would be, would be definitely on, on, on that side to, to work. But yeah, I mean, we, we would be, would be definitely on, on, on that side to, to work, for, for affordable housing. But yeah, I mean, market is, market is so volatile these days, so we, it'll be premature to, to commit to that.
Anything further? Counselor Nigel and then Counselor Hunter, please, and Counselor Burbak. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Nigel.
Thank you through your worship. Uh, now who would service the cul-de-sac roads? Is that would be a city serviced or would that be kind of sourced out to a, a third party?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, uh, the, the, the streets we are proposing is as per the municipal standards. And our assumption is that city will assume it. That'll be street road. Uh, I mean, uh, city road. Thank you.
Counselor Hunter and then Counselor Burbak, please.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, my question through you is, um, in regards to the sanitary connections. Are you dependent on the subdivision to the west coming online before you connect to sanitary? Or do you have an alternate, uh, plan?
Through you, your worship, that's correct. Uh, we have, uh, we have worked with the subdivision to the west and, uh, there was one meeting with the city staff as well. So, so we are trying to, we're trying to connect our sanitary services to the west, so that it'll be, it'll be convenient for, for all the parties, even for the city. So, so that's, that's the plan. And that's where I was showing in the, in the, uh, in the graphic, where there's a easement we are, we are trying to achieve through hydro one to, to, to provide that service there.
And counsel, thank you. And Counselor Burbak?
Thank you through the mayor. I have a few, uh, one question, uh, for, um, staff, but actually I'm gonna ask a question of the, the presenter first. I, I was curious, like Counselor Henderson, what, uh, exactly environmentally sensitive means? Is that including, uh, electric charging vehicles and using native plants? I'm just curious as to what environmentally sensitive would include.
Thank you, Counselor. Through your chair, yes, that's, that's correct. So we will follow the guidelines, cities' guidelines for in, in moment, the, environmental sensitive design. And we'll, we'll, we'll go, go from there.
Counsel Burbak, did you want to ask a question at this time? Um, unless we wait and wait for the presenter to be done and then come back to Counselor, come back to Mr. Bannon, or would you like to ask that at this time?
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor, whatever.
Let's finish out the presentation, uh, questions for the presenter and then if we can come back to Mr. Bannon, if that's okay with you. Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Briscoe.
Thank you through your worship. Um, are there any community fees, um, anticipated for the development?
Through your, uh, could, could you please elaborate the question? I, I couldn't get it.
But, um, similar to, uh, con, like a condo fee, um, in this kind of complex. Um, just speaking to the affordability concerns, if there's any, um, kind of community fees in that way that are anticipated.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the question. Thank you for that clarification through, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. No, it, it, these all are free, freehold townhouses, so there won't be any, any, any additional fees.
Thank you. Any further questions for the representative, the applicant? And we'll come back to, uh, to the, uh, representative at the very end of the, uh, this meeting if there's something else. So at this stage, uh, thank you very much and we'll, uh, we'll perhaps have you make a few closing remarks at the end, okay? And I'm going to, Counselor Burbak, you had a question for Mr. Bannon?
I did. Thanks through the mayor, uh, to Mr. Bannon. I, I had a question about, um, line thirty-four. Is that the same as Highway seven and eight? I'd never seen that before. But when they, when the presentation came on, I saw that, uh, Mr. Sagar had that, that line thirty-four and seven and eight were the same. Is that correct?
Mr. Bannon.
Through, uh, your worship, um, I just need to confirm the, the line thirty-four is actually, I believe it's the road to the south. I'm just trying to find it on one of my plans here. Just give me one split moment here. Yes, I, I'm sure that line thirty-four is the, the road to the, the south of the development, um, which is, um, south of the CN railway.
Okay, thank you. I just, I was a little confused by the map. They had it as the same road. So that seemed a little confusing. Um, my other question was, uh, can you give us an update on the status of the subdivision that was proposed to the west of the hydro corridor? Uh, where is that at, at the moment?
Uh, through your worship, uh, I, I haven't been involved with the subdivision to the west. But the manager of planning is here and she can probably give you a better update on, uh, where they're at with that development, uh, instead.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Hackler.
Thank you. So through the mayor to Counselor Burbak, the application for it's the cash, cachet subdivision. And we're still in, uh, reviewing process with them. I believe we're on, uh, the second submission. And we've just received, uh, all of staff's comments and we forwarded them back to the applicants. We are waiting on a revised submission. Um, and we're hoping that, uh, we can bring that forward to council in the new year.
Thank you, Ms. Hackler. Anything further? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to, uh, I believe we had one delegation, but I, I'm not sure if it's, uh, going to be, I'm gonna turn to the clerk on this one. I'm not sure if that delegation is going to be present.
Uh, through your worship, so there were two additional, uh, individuals who registered to speak, being Jamie Dick from MTE and then Thomas Abraham, uh, which is now my understanding that he is part of the overall application. Perhaps we will, uh, give them an opportunity to, uh, say a couple of words, uh, if they still have anything further to add, if that's agreeable to you.
Certainly. Uh, so Jamie, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Yeah, I, I didn't have any additional comments to add after the, uh, staff, uh, presentation and, uh, the planning presentation. Uh, I just wanted to be present if there were any questions that came up related to engineering or any of the reports that MT, uh, prepared for this submission. Um, so yeah, no further comments at this time.
Thank you. And anything further with regards to delegation, Ms. Defoe?
Uh, through you, your worship, uh, we're just working to connect Thomas. Um, Thomas, are you able to unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm Thomas. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, and thank you all council members. That's it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would like to say thank you for everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And maybe at the end we'll come back if there's any other closing remarks on behalf of the applicant. So turning to questions and comments from Q and A, uh, Ms. Akins, is there anything in the Q and A?
Worship, no comments or, uh, questions have been submitted through the Q and A feature in Zoom.
Thank you so much. And then our final item is that, is there any closing comments from the applicant representatives? Anything further?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no, we do not have any, any further comments or, or anything to add other than the affordability thing. Uh, yes, we, we, we will try. We will try to make it as affordable as it could be to, to serve the community better. That's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much for your information this evening.
Thank you.
So item number five, city council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting, where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the applications after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website. This public meeting is adjourned. We'll now move to our next, uh, application or our next, uh, public meeting. And so at this time I will call the public meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application Z zero eight dash two-two. The application affects existing R four zoning provisions relating to townhouse dwellings in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting will be as follows. Staff will present the application on behalf of the city of Stratford. Council may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application, but are caution, cautioned not to make comment nor take a position on this application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Delegates are reminded that their questions and comments should be planning-related. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read by a clerk's office staff, Ms. Akins. And public is advised that if a person has provided council with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaw is adopted or a decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss and appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed and written materials presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, we will now proceed with the meeting and I'll invite Ms. Hackler, manager of planning, to make her presentation. Ms. Hackler, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna share my screen here and let me know if there's any problems.
Thank you. That's great. Go ahead.
Perfect. I don't, doesn't seem to be sharing as a, as a presentation. I'll just, I'll just move forward this way. Uh, that's fine. So this application for zone change was submitted by planning staff on behalf of the city of Stratford. Basically what, uh, what we discovered was that there is, there are discrepancies with the R four zone, which are preventing current plans of subdivisions that have blocks that are zoned R four and, uh, site plan applications for various types of townhouses that have a zoning of R four as well. It's preventing us from moving forward to registering the R four zone properties as well as from approving site plans, uh, that are for R four zoned type developments. So basically the R four zone applies strictly to townhouse developments. As you can see, this is a, the older zoning by, or the old zoning bylaw. In April 2022, the previous council approved a new zoning bylaw. And generally what happens, uh, with zoning bylaws, especially when we undertake a, a comprehensive zoning bylaw review, we end up noticing a number of errors, omissions, typos and whatnot throughout the course of a year. And generally we undertake a housekeeping amendment every year, um, to address any of those issues. In this case with the R four zone, we noticed that the issue was more pressing and that we needed to address this zone, this zoning right away so that we could proceed with registration as well as approving site plans. So I'll just show council quickly, um, what the, what the issue at hand is. So, so the old zoning bylaw, as you can see, it was separated out, the R four zone was separated out into two subcategories. And then it allowed for four different types of, of dwellings, including a fourplex. The fourplex since has been removed and is now in the R three zone. So that's, uh, it's no longer part of the R four zone. However, the townhouses, the various types of townhouses were permitted under both subcategories. And then there are, I didn't show the second page, but there are a couple of zoning provisions that diff, that are different from one another. And they would apply to, um, each of the subcategories. So now the new zoning bylaw that was recently passed, as you can see, it now has four subcategories. And it also differentiates between the different types of townhouses. So there's street-fronting townhouses are only permitted in the R four one. And then cluster townhouses are permitted in the R four two, R four three and R four four. So the problem is, is that when, in the past, when council has approved site-specific zone changes. So this one, for example, is for five seventy-six O loan. And council approved a site-specific zoning, that's an R four two dash fifteen, which permits three different types of, of townhouse type dwellings and, and of course the, uh, the fourplex. And then the only provision that it allows or has a site-specific provision only for the maximum building height. So then generally what, uh, the, the planners would do is they would, they would look at the parent zone and they would kick back to the, to the other zoning provisions under the parent zone. However, in this case, sorry, I'll skip back right, wait for one second. So in this case, we have street-fronting towns. And then we kick back to the R four two zone, which is only applies to cluster townhouses. Um, and to, I believe it was Counselor Briscoe's question, the cluster townhouses, speak to stacked townhouses, back-to-back townhouses. And they're generally constructed on a single, on a full block. So you could potentially have eight units on one block. And so in this case, whereas a street-fronting town, as Mr. Bannon described, is generally separately conveyable, it comes in a separate parcel. And so you're not gonna have a lot area of eight hundred square meters that would apply to a single townhouse unit. So we've, we've come across this issue. And so basically what we're proposing to do is amend the R four zone so that it'll likely look much more, it would, it will likely resemble the previous R four, uh, zoning in the previous zoning bylaw, uh, with some minor tweaks. And then we also are looking to amend the definitions for the townhouse units, just so that it's more clear and more user-friendly for, uh, planners like ourselves, council, as well as consultants and developers. So that's, that's in a, in a nutshell, what we're, what we're proposing to do. Uh, and then in speaking of, I, I did mention the housekeeping amendments. Right now, just for council's information, there is a, uh, a version of the zoning bylaw that was approved in, in April that is going around between building, planning, um, and bylaw enforcement staff. And people are making notes, uh, regarding different provisions that they would like tweaked or changed and whatnot. And so that, uh, that is underway. I'm hoping to bring forward a housekeeping amendment for the other, um, provisions that we're reviewing right now in the first quarter of 2023. And so that, sorry, excuse me, that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hackler. Questions from council? Counselor Burbak, I see your hand. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'm just curious where stacked townhouses would fit into those definitions? Or is that a completely, is that, does that exist under another bylaw?
Through Mayor Ritzma to Counselor Burbak's question, I actually fully anticipated this question. So the, the cluster townhouses include the, they're, they include vertically as well as horizontally attached townhouses. So sorry, I'm looking down because I'm looking at my zoning bylaw. So that includes the stacked townhouses, which are, uh, when we have units on top of one another. So I always describe townhouse units, if you have a block of, say, eight units wide, so eight, we'll say eight front doors kind of thing. Then you could, in each unit, you could have three kind of subunits within it or so, or two units. And so those are the stacked townhouses and then the back-to-back, they would be, um, and they would be, they're not overly common in, in smaller cities. It's more, uh, uh, a larger urban city thing. But, uh, those would be if you have townhouses that have units that are, are back-to-back. And then in that case, sometimes you can also have upper and lower units as well.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
Okay, so that brings up a question in my mind through your worship. Um, so when we're trying to promote accessibility in our city and making things more accessible and we start building things like, um, stacked townhouses, we already have trouble with developers planning accessible homes with, you know, single homes and with townhouses. But with stacked townhouses, it's even worse because, you know, they don't have elevators. So, you know, there's lots of steps. you know, they don't have elevators. So, you know, there's lots of steps in them. So is there a way that we can, as a city, decide not to allow, say, stacked townhouses so that we can start eliminating some of this problems with accessibility? Because not just the person buying the house might have accessible issues, but some of their friends or family might, or or future people that are buying. And I realize it's, you know, we, we also want to build up, but I'm just wondering how we work ourselves around this as, as a city.
Through councillor Ritzma to councillor, sorry, through Mayor Ritzma to councillor Henderson's question. So with respect to townhouses, in my experience, I have seen, sorry, stacked townhouses, I have seen stacked townhouses that have accessibility. I've seen cases where they've had stacked townhouses that would have like a walkout and they propose like a sidewalk that would go basically behind the buildings. And then the, the units would, would have the walkout at the back. And so those could potentially be accessible. As for actually putting a provision in our zoning bylaw that would require, say, a percentage of, of accessible units, I am not familiar of a case where, I mean, it probably has done that. I mean, staff could, could look into that. But I think, yeah, generally speaking, from an accessibility standpoint, those units, yeah, would typically be found in apartment buildings. Or if, if the developer chose to, to create them to be accessible.
Thank you, Ms. Hackler. Anything further from council? Seeing none, I'm moving down to delegations. I don't believe through the, through the clerk that there are any registered delegations on this item.
Through your worship, that is correct. There are no registered delegations.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to turn to Ms. Akins. Is there anything from the Q and A that needs to be read?
Through you, your worship, there are no comments or questions in the Q and A.
Thank you very much. And then moving back to Ms. Hackler, anything in the way of a final comment?
No, I have nothing more. Thank you.
Thanks so very much. So item number five, city council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting, where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@strafford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website. This public meeting is adjourned. And I'll turn the meeting back to Mr. Fo to the special council agenda. Mr. Fo.
Through your worship, returning to your special council agenda, item four is adjournment to a public meeting under the Building Code Act. And there is a motion that the special council meeting adjourned to a public meeting under the Building Code Act to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed amendment to building bylaw one twelve dash two thousand and five, including fee schedule A, and to reconvene following the public meeting.
Thank you. A mover for such, thank you, councillor BD and councillor Burbak, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you. So I'll call the public meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons on the proposed amendments to the building bylaw, including fee schedule A. The order of procedure for this meeting will be, staff will provide an overview of the proposed amendments. Council may ask questions but are cautioned not to to make comments nor to take a position at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Delegates are reminded that their questions and comments should be planning related. Comments and questions from the Q and A will be read in by Ms. Akins. The public is also advised that comments expressed and written materials presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to the order of this procedure? Seeing none, we will proceed with this meeting and I will ask Mr. Deweyard, chief building officer, to make the staff presentation. Mr. Deweyard.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Ritzma, the objective tonight is to obviously hold this public meeting to hear for, for the public with regards to the fee changes. Under the Building Code Act, we, we are required as a municipality to cover reasonable costs and enforcing and administering the building code through the charging of fees. In, in regards to these fees, both the direct and indirect costs are eligible. In order to manage some of the fluctuations in the, the building code activity, we do, the act does allow for reserve, the city does have a reserve fund for these fees. The, the fees that we are considering are contained within the schedule A, which is attached to this report. And the, the last review and increased fees happened in the city in two thousand and twenty-one. Just want to bring to council's attention that with the proposed fee structure, we would see an increase for a single detached dwelling from a dollar thirty-five a square foot up to a dollar forty a square foot, which is approximately a four percent increase in the fees. As, as you can read in the, in the report, the, the current inflation that we have from, you know, the year over year, September was six point nine percent. And construction inflation generally runs higher than, than the consumer price index and that is somewhere in around the eighteen and a half upwards of Toronto, where you get up over twenty-five percent right now, what we're looking at for residential construction costs. So we've, we've, we've kept a modest increase of four percent, which would add about seventy-five dollars to permit fees, bringing permit fees for a fifteen hundred square foot bungalow from around two thousand twenty-five dollars up to twenty-one hundred dollars in, in building permit fees. We've also added a clarification with regards to bill twenty-three in, in schedule C of the building bylaw for consideration. And we've added some potential required documents. We've clarified in there that a lot grading plan or a lot drainage plan may be required, as well as a stormwater management plan, including reports and or drawings. Now, these, these were added specifically for units that would not now require going through site plan approval, just to, to give the city some tools to mitigate some of our bylaw complaints in the future, that we can still ensure that these developments are, are proceeding in a manner that it's not going to be intrusive to neighboring properties as we see intensification. Beyond that, Mayor Ritzma, I don't have anything else, but I am definitely open to any questions or that council or the public may have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Deweyard. Questions? And I see councillor Hunter. Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you, your worship. And through you, my question is, your report references a shortfall in the reserve fund. Is that a true shortfall or is it just created by timing so that money would be coming in in a subsequent fiscal period that would, that would cover that shortfall?
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Mr. Deweyard.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Ritzma, yeah, councillor Hunter, that's, that's a great question. So yeah, generally speaking, we would, as noted in here, like to have a hundred percent of our operating costs, which is a good, is a good number to float in case we have a bad year. What we're seeing this year trending is that we're going to be slightly lower. So we're going to have to draw from some of those funds. We're right around three hundred thousand dollars in the reserve fund right now. And our annual operating costs have fluctuated between around seven hundred and fifty thousand, up around nine hundred thousand in the last four or five years. So what we're seeing is we're slightly low, but a, as you mentioned, with a lot of the development that's upcoming in the next couple of years, anticipated in the city, we do anticipate that that reserve will start to come back up. And we do anticipate that, you know, we may be in a, in a case in a couple of years, if we have some good years to, to not have to increase our, our building permit fees on a year over year basis.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Hend, go ahead.
You mentioned this, Bill C twenty-three. So if we're not getting the money in through development fees, I'm just curious how this is going to play into it. And like, how is it going to increase when they don't have to pay the fees? Or are they still going to have to pay the permit fees?
So through, through the mayor to councillor Henderson, building permit fees have not been, and the building code act is not proposed to be amended through bill twenty-three.
Okay.
And in development charges is not, is not kind of part of tonight's discussion. I do understand that there may be some more information coming for council in a future meeting to kind of explain some of the DC changes. But yeah, in, in a general sense with this, what we're looking to change in schedule C is, is types of plans that would have been dealt with through a site plan approval process, that we will not have a site plan approval process for units at ten or fewer units, you know, so some of these block townhouses, like we were talking about tonight, if it's on a standalone parcel, they would be able to go directly to a building permit. So that's, that's what we're looking at here, councillor Henderson.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Briscoe.
Thank you. Through your worship, with that anticipated kind of growth coming, it will, is the current staff capacity able to handle that? Or we also need to increase staff capacity, which could lead to another increase later?
So through, through Mayor Ritzma to councillor Briscoe, again, great question. As far as staffing, right now, we are, we are in a, I would say we are in a decent position. As the budget's forthcoming, there, there is a revised or, or an additional position that we're looking at, but that was partially through the changes that were made with the short term rental program. So I would suggest we stay tuned on that one, but, but there will likely be some more staffing required and some potential changes to the, the breakdown of the staff within the department as we move forward.
And, and I'll just caution council that we don't venture too far off, off the public meeting, but more information on both your question and councillor Henderson's question will come through human resources and corporate services as we move along. But very good questions, but perhaps to save for another day. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Deweyard. And I don't believe, I'm, I'm looking to the clerk, I don't believe there's any registered delegations at this time.
Through your worship, that is correct.
Thank you. And I'm turning to Ms. Akins. Anything from the clerk's office with regards to the Q and A?
Through you, your worship, no comments or questions have been submitted to the Q and A feature.
Thank you very much. So city council intends to consider this proposed amendment at a future infrastructure, transportation and safety committee meeting, where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the amendments after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive future notice of this matter, please email clerks@strafford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website. This public meeting is adjourned. And I'll turn the meeting back to Mr. Fo.
Through you, worship, returning again to your special council meeting agenda. Item five is reading of the bylaws, and there is one bylaw listed for consideration, being the confirmatory bylaw. It requires first and second reading and then third and final reading.
Thank you very much. Your first and second, thank you councillor BD and councillor Burbak. We'll move and second that. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. And then moving to the third and final. Mover for that. Thank you councillor Briscoe and councillor Hunter. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that is unanimous. And then our final item of tonight's agenda is a motion to adjourn. Move by. Councillor McCabe and seconded by, I'm sorry, councillor Niger. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting and we'll see you soon. Thank you.